I call this meeting of the City Council to order for August 8, 2023. It's our regular meeting. This meeting is being recorded. Please take the roll. Barbo.
Here.
Harpin.
Here.
Obasahan.
Here.
Baleskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Blackmer.
Here.
Eight yeas, we have quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. Please remember Linda DeGraff, a employee of the North Adams School Systems, Alan Romano, a retired member of the North Adams Police Department, and Ed Morandi, a member of the Historical Commission, the Sister City Committee, and the Historical Society at one point. He also was an active volunteer at Hillside Cemetery with that group.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes for July 25, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and Counselor Sapienza?
Yeah, discussion on this in the minutes. Let me grab the page here. There was a typo, and I would like to make a motion to amend by removing the statement that starts with "on the motion" of Counselor Sapienza, seconded by Counselor Bona. That was a typo, and it was put in there by accident. So I make a motion to remove that, to amend the minutes by removing that.
Do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Point of order. Which page is that on, please?
Oh, that would be page four of the package.
Thank you.
Excuse me? Can I ask what word is misspelled?
What's the type?
No, it was on page four. There was no misspelling on it. It was a cut-and-paste error. It was inserted accidentally. This was from another.
Oh.
Yeah. So that shouldn't be in there at all. So that whole paragraph should be deleted.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? We need a vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries now. We have a motion and a second on the minutes to vote on as amended. Any discussion? That's already done.
Sorry.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Obasahan abstained. Okay, we're going to move on. Hearing of visitors on the agenda items. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. You have two minutes if anyone wishes to approach. Go ahead. Name an address for the record.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Quincy Street. I would like to address the agenda number 12273. I'm not saying Mr. Sapien, or Counselor Sapienza, is bringing this forward because people can't hear. And the biggest problem I find is that the counselors are not speaking into the microphone. So, you know, if you turn your head, that doesn't go in there. You know, and I find it very hard, and I can turn this thing right up to the max and still not hear. So would you please, you know, speak into the mic so we can all hear? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the agenda. Without objection, I would like to move Council Paper 12,290, Mayor's Communication Number 74, to the front. Council Paper 12,290, Mayor's Communication Number 74, requesting time to share in a two-part presentation on ongoing work with Tourist on Tax Increment Financing Agreement for properties owned by Blackington Mill LLC at 1470 Mass Ave. Mayor?
Thank you, President Blackmer, and thank you, everyone, tonight for being here. As discussed in my communication, we're here tonight as a two-phase approach to a meeting that we're proposing a TIF agreement. That meeting will be held on August 22. So the first part of tonight's presentation will be done by Paul St. Pierre, who is the Regional Director of the Western Mass Office of Business Development. I've asked Paul to come tonight to give us an abbreviated education on what TIFs are and how they impact our community. The second part of the presentation will be by our friends at Tourist who are interested in expanding and developing the Blackington Mill on Mass Avenue. So what I'd like for that point of the presentation is for you all to get up to speed in their development on their current property, as well as their visionary plan for the Blackington Mill. Over the next week or so, we will be finalizing the agreement, the TIF agreement, which will be presented to you on August 25. That agreement will be reviewed by our team, Tourist's legal team, as well as Paul's team, and presented to you for discussion and hopefully approval. But I thought it was important tonight that we get educated for some of our new counselors on TIFs, and Paul was willing to come up and speak to all of you. So again, tonight is mostly an educational piece, and I wanted to give you a time to think about what's being discussed. So when we meet on the 22nd, we have a lively discussion. Okay? So now I'd like to introduce Paul St. Pierre from Mass Development.
Hey, folks. So again, I'm Paul St. Pierre. I'm with the Massachusetts Office of Business Development, the Regional Director out here in Western Mass. And as Mayor Maxi indicated, she asked me to come out and just give a brief kind of overview of our Economic Development Incentive Program, which encompasses several different incentives that are available, but including the TIFs that we're going to be talking about more as we go forward. So as you can see, we're divided into a few different regions. There's a Regional Director for each part of Massachusetts. Western Mass is the largest region. It's 101 cities and towns. And the mission of the Mass Office of Business Development is really to facilitate job growth across the Commonwealth, to help support businesses, to help entrepreneurs start businesses, to help, you know, create good-paying jobs, full-time jobs with health insurance, you know, for all of our constituents in Massachusetts. So that's just kind of a general overview of who we are, and some of the tools that we have in order to help fulfill this mission are a range of tax incentive programs that we can make available to municipalities and businesses to take advantage of, to help support them and help them succeed in their marketplace. This is a not super-brief overview of some of the different things that we do. The main thing that we're talking about today is the top item there, the Economic Development Incentive Program. But we have a lot of different things that we do. And just, I guess, as an informational perspective, if in your travels you encounter businesses who might benefit from a variety of support, I'm someone that you can connect them with or connect with yourself and make an introduction. And I'll be able to help in a lot of different ways. And even if there are programs that are not necessarily run through my department within the state, I can make other connections and referrals to, you know, my colleagues and coworkers across the different secretariats. So to really drill into the Economic Development Incentive Program, this is our biggest program that we have. And it's a tax incentive program where companies can receive both state tax credits and local property tax incentives. And the reason that the state will do this is to incentivize job creation, retention, and private investment, of course. So within the Economic Development Incentive Program, one of the things that the state looks for are but-for considerations. This is a huge criteria that a project needs to meet in order to receive tax incentives from the state. A but-for consideration means that the state is looking for projects that otherwise would not be feasible, or would not happen as quickly, or would not happen as well. So they will look at a project that has a lot of potential to benefit the community, create jobs, create, you know, payroll taxes, do all the good things that we want companies to be doing, you know, in our communities, but maybe that there is a financial gap, or it's difficult for the project to be feasible on its own. And so the state can add some assistance through this program. And some of the things that they'll look at is, you know, the state will not incentivize a program or a project that's already started. If it's, you know, if they're already started construction, they'll look at that, and they'll say, well, why are we going to incent you? This is already happening. So it really is targeted at projects that need this support the most to try and get them over the hump and make it possible for these really, sometimes transformative projects, sometimes smaller projects, you know, to come forward and make a difference in the community. So there is a difference between the state and the local tax incentives. I guess we already kind of covered some of this, but some of the things the state will look at is whether or not the municipality is contributing toward the project. This often happens with a TIF or an STA, a Special Tax Assessment. And the reason for that is the state is unlikely to incentivize a project that doesn't have local buy-in. They like to use the phrase, you know, skin in the game. They also look for businesses that are going to create net new jobs. They're not going to incentivize a program that is going to take jobs out of one community and just bring them to the next. You know, that's not a project that is really beneficial in the big picture, even though it may be beneficial to a local community. They're also looking for projects that do out-of-state sales because certainly a goal of the state is to bring dollars into Massachusetts. And they'll also be looking to incentivize projects that can show that they will procure and use services that are local. So they want to see that they're bringing, you know, money into the state, and then they're circulating it locally so we can grow our local economies. And they are absolutely always looking for manufacturers, too. Manufacturing jobs are great jobs, and we have a real growth potential with our advanced manufacturing in the state. So this is not a manufacturing project. I know that's coming forward, but certainly we have, our programs are very manufacturer-friendly. So as far as the Economic Development Incentive Program, the first step in this is for a business to create a preliminary application. And that would be essentially the guiding or the authority that controls the EDIP through the Office of Business Development or the council. They will review all the preliminary applications that come in and make decisions as to which projects will move forward. I can tell you that the Tourist project is one of the projects that was chosen to move forward in this process. But basically, they look at, you know, what are the most, you know, advantageous projects? What are the projects that are most likely to be competitive to receive these types of awards? You know, are they meeting the requirements? And then if they do, you know, have a good project, then they will invite the applicant to submit a supplementary application. And that's kind of where we are in the process with this particular project right now. Some of the things that the EACC, that's the board that really reviews these applications, looks at. They look at the municipal support, as I mentioned. They'll look at the number of jobs that are being created, when those jobs are being created, what's the capital investment, or how much money is going to be, you know, used to make the project happen? Are these jobs that are going to be created, are they going to be good jobs? Are they going to pay living wage? Are they going to offer health insurance, retirement benefits? Again, they're going to look for the out-of-state sales. They will consider what industry the project is in. There are certain industries that they may not incent, you know, they won't incent, you know, a marijuana dispensary, for example. Like I mentioned, they love manufacturing. We also like to incentivize hospitality because, you know, they're very beneficial to bringing people from out of state, giving them a place to stay. And we've seen plenty of data that shows when people can stay overnight, they'll spend significantly more in the local communities. They'll look at, you know, whether or not the company is located in Massachusetts. Are they paying corporate taxes to the state? And are they committing to procuring locally? You know, local vendors, local suppliers. And again, making that local economy just circulating, you know, the cash flow. So we don't only have projects that come forward for the state tax incentives. We also, within this program, we administer local-only incentive programs. These often take the forms of TIFs or STAs. Those are tax incentives that apply to property taxes that are owed to the municipality. And even though in these situations, the agreement is a partnership between the business and the municipality, it is administered by the state. It's overseen by the state, and it has to go through, you know, the state verification and application process. It's not as restrictive as the state tax credits are as far as some of the industries having to see the outside-of-state sales, things like that. But it still has to go through a similar application and verification process. So we're going to get more into the tax increment financing part of the EDIP. Again, this is just one of the tax incentive programs that is under the umbrella of the EDIP terminology. So I tried not to use too many acronyms. I apologize. But so a TIF or a tax increment financing is an agreement between a business and a municipality that will provide an exemption on a tax liability that is due to the increased value of a parcel. So when a business is coming into a community and they say, we have, there's this parcel here, and let's say the assessed value is, you know, X amount, and we're going to be making an investment in it that will allow us to create jobs and generate economic growth and support this community. But by making that investment, the assessed value is going to increase and therefore lead to a higher tax liability. The net difference between what the tax liability was before the investment was made and after the project is complete is essentially negotiable. And it's negotiable for a period of between five and 20 years and for anywhere between 5% and 100%. Now, we never see a project that's for five years and 5% discount. It just doesn't happen. And we never see one that's 20 years for 100%. It's always somewhere in the middle. Some, you know, projects will have really short, you know, five-year terms, and some of them will get 20. But again, they're usually, it's always on a case-by-case basis. You know, communities have to look at what the real needs are of the project and what makes sense to come up with a tax increment financing agreement that makes sense for all the parties involved. This graphic is really helpful, I think, in communicating how the, how it works as far as the tax line. I thought we had a little laser pointer on here. Oh, there we go. Okay, great. So this kind of just puts into a visual form kind of what I just said. But so this box here, this blue box, this is the property taxes that a landlord owner may be paying on a parcel that, you know, they already own, they already exist. And with a tax increment finance agreement, none of that tax liability changes. Whatever they're currently paying, they will continue to pay throughout the entire length of the TIF. Where you see this green box here, that represents the increase in assessed value of a parcel based on an investment that was made that will create jobs, that will, you know, do the things that we want it to do for the community. And then this gray area here represents the percentage or the amount of negotiable tax liability, essentially. So as a TIF goes through each year, they will have a certain percentage of this gray bar that they will have tax relief or they will not be obligated to pay that amount of tax. They'll still pay the taxes that were being paid before and a percentage of, you know, what is owed from this kind of gray area. And then, you know, typically, they also, they start with a higher discount. It could be as high as 100%, you know, and then go down to a 0% by the end of the term. So the taxes that will be paid at the end of the TIF agreement will be all the way up there, the post-TIF taxes, right? So they'll continue paying what they're already paying now. They'll pay a little bit less of the increase in the assessed value over the terms of the TIF. And then when the term concludes, they'll be responsible for paying the entire taxable amount on the project, right? This is a, the concept here is that we can incentivize businesses by charging them less more tax than what they're already paying, if that makes sense. So in order to do a TIF or an STA, which is another type of tax assessment that we're not going to dig into today, but in order to do these things, they have to be approved by a city council or at a town meeting. Now, you have a big advantage here in North Adams that you have a city council, because if you have a town meeting, and it's only once a year, it's really hard to get these things to line up and to help these businesses, you know, move forward along the timeline that they need. So anyway, the TIFs have to be approved by the city council. And then they also have to go to the EACC Board, you know, through the state, for final approval. Now, as Mayor Maxi indicated, before the agreement comes to the city council, it will be reviewed by the legal counsel of the state just to make sure that all the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, that it makes sense, and that it's going to, you know, pass muster, you know, once it's approved finally. On rare occasion, there may be times where maybe if a municipality didn't provide that agreement in advance to the state to sign off of, then they would have, if there were changes that had to be made, they would have to come get you guys to approve it again, and it just extends the process. And so anyway, we will be reviewing the agreements before they come to the vote, just to make sure that they're sound. But then, after the city council approves them again, they'll come back to the EACC. Our board meets four times a year. So as projects kind of come forward, we can continually bring them, you know, along, like through the pipeline. Some of the other incentive programs that are offered by the state are only accepted or only reviewed on an annual basis. So it's another advantage of this program. So once a project is approved, it becomes a certified project by the state. And that is true whether it is a local-only or whether the state is also contributing a tax incentive of its own. So once a project is certified by the Commonwealth, there are explicit terms that will be spelled out that will be related to job creation, to the progress of the building, just of the project itself. And the business will be required to complete an annual compliance report with the state. That report will be available or accessible to the municipality. So the state will look at, like when they're going through this application process, the business will say, we're going to create this many jobs. This is the schedule that we anticipate creating them. And the state will stay on top of them and follow up every year. You know, so, okay, we're three years in. You said you would create this many jobs. You know, have you done so? And if not, you know, what's the reason? Can we look at that and have that discussion? Do we need to adjust this, or are you a noncompliant? So again, the municipalities can access these reports. And I believe that North Adams has already the link and the password, but if not, I can provide that to you so you can be able to go on and look at the status of all your current TIFs and other economic development incentive projects. So anyways, I guess this is the, just to wrap this up, when there is a business that is looking for a tax incentive, whether it's local-only or through the state, you can contact me, or they can contact me, to help guide them through the process. The earlier that I can be brought on, the better to help them understand what's possible and what's available. I can help a business, you know, determine whether or not they're a good candidate for tax incentives. I can help them with their applications. I can help explain the process, you know, overall to them. And then help them, like, understand realistically what's possible to do so we can support them effectively. So and then the last slide, and I know you have all this printed out, which is great, too. You have my information there. Also, I provided the information of some of my colleagues here. Anna Marie Kirsten is our EDIP Director. She is just an absolute wonderful source of knowledge and a wonderful woman. And then our EDIP Program Manager, Joey, he is the person who would provide, for example, the links to access the EDIP reports. And he manages the application portals and things like that. And then Peter Milano, he's our statewide Director of Strategy and Business Development. And he really leads the MOBD team directly. Of course, we're under the Secretariat and, you know, guided by Secretary Howe. But, you know, Peter Milano is our statewide director. And so he's another good contact you can have. And if you're interested in learning more about our programs, you know, there's links here, easy enough to type in, but you can just go to mass.gov also and just search, you know, search for us, and everything is really connected to our MOBD page. You can learn more about the Economic Development Incentive Program, the overall Housing and, excuse me, Department of Economic Development. And some of our other programs, we have a vacant storefront program. We have other tax incentive programs as well that could be applicable to certain projects. So anyways, I hope this was helpful, informative. And I guess that's all I've got for you.
Great, thank you, Paul. We're going to hold all of our questions to the end, if that's okay, President Blackmer. In the next part of our presentation, I'd like to introduce Ben Sevenson and Eric Kearns from Tourist. And they're going to talk about where they are with the tourist resort as well as their plan for the Blackington Mill.
Thanks, Paul, for coming on here. That was really helpful. Thank you. Even I learn things about it all the time. And thank you, President Blackmer and the council, for having us. And of course, Mayor Maxi, for giving us an opportunity to share some of the ideas about the potential for the historic Black and Mill and an expanded tourist resort. But first, a little recap. Since opening in the summer of 2018, we actually just turned five last week, Tourist has welcomed over 35,000 visitors to North Adams. Two-thirds of whom come from outside the Commonwealth, bringing fresh dollars into our community. We are proud that the Tourist project has drawn significant positive attention to North Adams and has been profiled in national and international press at a level unprecedented for the region. The project has received feature coverage in Vanity Fair, The New York Times, Vogue, Conde Nast Traveler, Boston Globe, Brides Magazine, Outside Magazine, CNN, and many more. We're also grateful and humbled to be the recipient of some industry recognition. Fodor's Travels, which many of you may be familiar with their guides, they've been around for a long time, included us on their list of the 100 Most Incredible Hotels in the World. We received a Surface Magazine Travel Award, and closer to home, we were honored with one Berkshires 2019, Putting the Berkshires on the Map Award. And in late 2022, this is one we're really proud of, Tourist was named one of the Top 10 Hotels in the World by Tablet, the Michelin Guide for Hotels. The existing tourist hotel employs a seasonally flexing staff of 50 to 65. And despite pandemic disruptions, Tourist distributed $6,300,000 in payroll to local workers from 2018 to 2022. By investing in the redevelopment of the Blackington Mill through a TIF agreement, the city can multiply and amplify Tourist's deep commitment to North Adams and already substantial private investment.
Want to talk a little bit about the mill?
Thanks, Eric. The Blackington Mill is located in the heart of the Blackington Historic District in the west end of North Adams. The village of Blackington, formerly known as Centerville, was added to the National Register of Historic Places in 1985 and is regarded as an exceptionally well-preserved mill village. To our knowledge, only two new houses have been built in this neighborhood since 1900. That was a gift of Hold de Jowett, and that's all the people who worked in the mill, standing in front of it. It's a really special photograph. The first industry appeared on this site in 1810 with considerable expansion during the 19th and 20th centuries. The last manufacturing of textiles at this mill ended during the Great Depression. Contemporary Black and Tin is a residential neighborhood at the confluence of the Housak River, the Mohawk Scenic Byway, and the Appalachian Trail. As the central neighborhood linking the economic development zones of North Adams and Williamstown, it's core to the sphere of cultural, educational, and recreational assets that define the northern Berkshires. Berkshires. With MCLA and Mass MoCA to the east, Williams College and the Clark to the west, the Clarksburg State Forest to the north, and Mount Greylock State Reservation to the south. The historic structures on the Blackington Mill campus, the 1917 three-story main mill structure, that's the big guy there, the 1908 weave shed, the low flat building, and the 19th century boilerhouse, will be reimagined as new components of Tourists. Hank Scholar, Tourist in-house architect, is now leading the design of the mill project. And we've undertaken some pre-construction work, which if you see there, that's all covered in lead paint and, and whatnot. And we've been doing this inside the mill. We've been doing pre-construction work. Gem Environmental's been doing it. They're baking soda blasting, the brick, wood, steel, and concrete. And it just takes all that material off, and you see the natural materials it was. It looks like it looked in 1917. It's really cool. It's sort of pre-construction work setting the building up for this opportunity. We had been thinking about how to develop this mill since we first bought it five years ago. Since that time, we've hosted over 35,000 guests at Tourists, and we know so much more about what they want. It's going to be a total joy to attempt to deliver to them more than they could have imagined. We hope to expand Tourist offerings to be more akin to a resort than a motel. The Blackington Mill was once known for its fine satinettes and fancy cashmirs. Its workers were well-paid relative to others in the textile industry, and there was a pride about the work that was done in this factory. And so it can be again. This time, we make smiles. We make family memories, we make romantic memories and ecological awakenings, we make weddings, and most importantly, at least for tonight's conversation, we make good jobs. We want people in this region to view hospitality as a career. There are 27 team members who have worked at Tourists for over two years. If you work for three years for the company, your health insurance goes from being 65% covered to being 100% covered. Medical, dental, vision, we offer paid parental leave, HSA, FSA, 401K. We have a robust employee assistance program supporting staff through all phases of their lives. Come work for us. High-end boutique hospitality is a labor-intensive business, and the TIF agreement will give us additional financial operating capacity early in the lifecycle of the expanded resort to invest in the staffing that will yield superb guest experiences and successful growth. In fact, service is our signature. Last year, our staff was recognized by Tablet, as Eric mentioned, the Michelin-owned Guide for Hotels, as the number one hotel service in the world during the pandemic, as voted on by their members. The multi-year renovation of the Blackington Mill will support many construction trades jobs, and we conservatively estimate that the completed mill will create 25 new hospitality jobs. It will allow over 10,000 or more people to overnight in North Adams each year. The reimagined Blackington Mill will feature, can I walk over there? Or I'll stay here so Mr. Cardamio can hear me speak. The main mill building will be hotel rooms. It'll be about 15 loft-style hotel rooms. We've taken some lessons from the pandemic. There's probably going to be kitchenettes in most, if not all, of these hotel rooms because different situations arise. There will be historically accurate windows, which this mill has over 50 windows that are 12 feet by nine feet, and there's 50 panes of glass in every window. And we're going to recreate them as they were. Not out of possibly the same material, but they will appear as they did. There'll be an event space. So Eric's highlighting it. That large room behind the boiler house is going to be our new event space. At Tourists, we receive over three event inquiries every day. So we get over 1,000 event inquiries every year, and we currently accommodate about 15 of them because we never made the big room. So we're finally going to have a big room. And in fact, we're going to have two options because in the weave shed, there'll be a restaurant. Yeah, and above that, there'll be a smaller event space that the restaurant could feed. And the larger event space is envisioned to be third-party caterers. There'll be a common space and provision store. So on the ground floor of the mill, where you sort of see that circulation path that runs right through, it happens on a few different floors, there'll be a provision store and office and support space and some retail so people can buy things like this. Art and adventure, this is my favorite part. So in the middle of that campus, you see a small rectangle right there. Yeah, that's what we call the Boiler House. It was the dye house for the Blackington Companies. That is going to be, is the oldest structure at the heart of the site, and it will be the new launchpad for Tourist's signature art and adventure programming. In addition to the interior space, the exterior, the landscape is being designed by our really talented friends at Reed Hildebrand, who design Tourist landscaping. They're doing the mill, and they're envisioning this sort of swale cut through the middle of the campus. You can see it there. They will accommodate the new public bike trail, which Eric's going to speak about a bit. That's really core to the identity of that courtyard. And one thing I think is notable is there's a lot of change in grade there, which means it's landscape people can't walk on. So it's going to be beautiful, and the circulation will be really clearly defined. Photovoltaic array. All the systems at Tourists are electric, and so utilizing the large flat roof for power generation is a priority. We're working with rehabilitation tax credits, and so we have to build to historic accuracy, and that may temper our photovoltaic ambitions. A tax increment financing agreement with the city of North Adams is a critical component of the complex financial mechanism without which this project cannot move forward. In this economic environment, it's likely that we'll be utilizing historic rehabilitation tax credits, property-assess clean energy financing, small business association financing, and traditional bank financing in order to make the project launch and succeed. Hospitality projects typically take between three to seven years to stabilize. The TIF will play an important role in getting the project through that crucial milestone, including the project's first permanent financing opportunity, which is one of the most critical moments in the life of a prospective hotel like this. But for the TIF, we cannot put together a business model that will allow us to take this important historic remnant of North Adams and turn it into a powerful economic engine for the future. But for the TIF, we will not be able to make these new jobs and invest in staff that will create a successful and enduring business. Thank you very much.
I just want to talk a moment about some public benefits. When we first began developing plans for Tourists in 2014, we spent a lot of time diving deep into the North Adams Vision 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Along with many other community challenges and opportunities, it specifically identifies increasing hotel capacity and growing outdoor recreation tourism in its economic development priorities. Since then, the Tourist team has actively collaborated with the city and local stakeholders to build a business that directly supports these transformative community goals. And now, looking forward, the Blackington Mill redevelopment is also envisioned with these clear priorities in mind. The Tourist's spirit is deeply connected to the history of this valley and our incredible community. All project developments are focused on creating site-specific experiences for our guests while also igniting other opportunities that enrich the Blackington neighborhood and by extension, the city. In the broadest sense, a hotel is a place of public accommodation, and we try to lean hard into that definition. Our publicly accessible 80-acre nature campus offers unique experiential amenities for both hotel guests and local residents with miles of hiking trails, abundant river access, and engaging outdoor art installations. Our suspension bridge over the Housak River has created an efficient and fun new pedestrian circulation. I personally love seeing my Blackington neighbors using it to grab something from Stop &amp; Shop instead of getting in their cars and driving around. We host frequent free public music and art events, particularly our Sing For Your Slumber series, that brings significant touring artists from across the nation to the hotel for special intimate performances. These are all free and anyone can come. Our lodge, our restaurant, the airport rooms, and our public outdoor spaces are open to all. Come, grab a coffee, a cocktail, some delicious eats, and enjoy a little micro-vacation in your own backyard. In recent years, the Tourist team has worked to be an accelerating force behind the North Adams Adventure Trail, the long-awaited and critically-needed public bike path connecting the recently completed Williamstown Bike Path to downtown North Adams, a distance of just over three miles. Despite all efforts, this trail has struggled to find a viable route for decades. Recognizing the transformative potential of the trail for both visitors and for local residents, we have spent the last six years assembling 38 parcels and easements to create a 1.75-mile route through our resort campus, stretching from the Williamstown Line east to Protection Avenue. And it includes this new passage underneath the Blackington Mill, where the adventure trail, as envisioned now, will come through underneath Ashton Avenue and through the mill before continuing on to the east. The mill will be a vibrant midway hub on the trail between the downtowns of Williamstown and North Adams and serve as a trailhead for new hiking and walking paths to explore our river valley and the lush public forests to the north. And finally, it's important to highlight that from a community benefit perspective, a hotel is a unique business type in that it creates performance-based public revenue through room occupancy taxes. At Tourists, we collect a 6.25 state occupancy tax and a 6% local option occupancy tax that goes directly to the city's bottom line. Since we opened five years ago and despite pandemic disruptions, we have collected over $750,000 in local rooms tax for the city. The addition of 50 more rooms in the mill, doubling our current capacity, means an additional 10,000 visitors each year overnight, and conservatively, that translates, translates to a projected $230,000 per year in additional rooms tax just for North Adams. Furthermore, regional tourism data shows, and Paul mentioned this earlier, that overnight visitors spend seven times more than day trippers. They shop, they eat in restaurants, they fill up their gas tanks, et cetera. We want to have these overnight guests and their dollars sleeping, eating, drinking, shopping, and exploring in North Adams. A renewed collaboration with the city via a TIF agreement will enable the Blackington Mill expansion to happen. But for the TIF, it will be impossible to have the necessary early stability to maximize room revenue and leverage our ongoing commitment to creating new economic vitality in the city. The addition of the Blackington Mill to the Tourist Resort, combined with new publicly-accessible outdoor recreation amenities, will position Tourists as a new regional superlative in scope and quality. The jobs, additional rooms and meals tax revenue, increased tourism, and outdoor recreation opportunities that will be created by an expanded Tourists can play a vital role in the bright future of North Adams. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I do. See how it works, the man behind the curtain?
Frank, please.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. St. Pierre?
Counselor Bona, and then Counselor Luskowitz, and Counselor Wilkinson.
Okay. Through the chair. It's nice having a representative here that explains the TIF. I've had the opportunity. I don't think there's any that I haven't approved, but one thing that happens is the public later on tends to criticize the council and the city, you know, over TIFs. And again, I'm not objecting to what's in front of us tonight. But I think you added some clarity tonight. And I, I think it also needs to be known, this, it's not easy getting a TIF, you know, that the ones that are applying to it have to put a lot of work behind it. It's not just going to your office and saying, we want a tax break, and you saying yes. Because one of the things we will hear is why are these businesses or owners that have oodles of money get tax breaks when the small mom and pops and manufacturers don't? And I think there's, again, you bulleted a number of items of what one has to follow to make that happen. And I think if those businesses look at that, they'll realize they might get one or two on that list, but there's, there's several. One thing, though, you did mention is that a project cannot have already started. Now, to what point? Because in a sense, someone could say, this project has started. So where, what is that definition specifically?
Sure. So a project doesn't necessarily start when a, when a, someone purchases a property. In this case, another purchased this property several years ago. I mean, everybody owned, every property is owned by someone, right? So what the state will look at when it's looking at the numbers and looking at the incentive and looking at the, the tax increment financing agreement, will be looking at what is going to be spent in the future after such an agreement would be approved. So if, you know, and again, if, if a project has been, if there's construction going on, if, if they're putting up a building, then that is, you know, an in-process project. Something where a building is already owned, maybe some preliminary work was done as far as cleaning it up, that doesn't necessarily, I mean, maybe in a, you know, an average, you know, you might think, oh, that means it's essentially started. But the real investment, the millions of dollars that it takes in order to bring a project like that to life, have not been committed. And so again, the state will look at, like they will not count any money that's already been spent, the purchase of the property, any of the cleaning up work that's been done. None of that factors into, into the, the TIF or the state economic development incentive program. They really will only look at, you know, specifically a project that's being presented. We intend to spend, you know, this amount of money, you know, millions of dollars in this case, in, in most of these cases, you know, on this specific project to, to make this vision happen. And so that's the, I guess, the, the point where the, where the project starts or where it doesn't start.
If I could continue. A couple, and again, this is not specific to the project that is in front of us. You're here explaining TIFs tonight, and again, it's not something that we have had, I don't think, a presentation like this in the past when we've had to have TIFs in front of us. The, you know, number of jobs has always been a big one of what it creates. What happens if a property is sold or a company goes bankrupt or closes or moves? Because we have had things like that have happened. Or they just don't follow through with what was promised? And who does that fall back on? Is it the state coming in and inspecting, or is it the city that's supposed to be on top of it? Who, who's watching that?
All right, that's a great question, and that's one I hear a lot. So, so as I mentioned in my presentation, there is a, an annual report that each person who receives an incentive is going to have to fill out and report back to the state. And that information will be made, obviously, to the municipality as well. If a project promises to create jobs, you know, a certain number of jobs, and they fail to do so, then that project can be decertified. And that project or that process can be initiated by the state or by the municipality. Typically, if it were a local-only incentive, then it would be up to the municipality to do so. If the state is also contributing in, with state and tax incentives, then the state is more likely to move to decertify a project that has not met those job creation targets. There's also, some of this depends on the agreement itself that's being negotiated as far as what's possible. There are certain provisions called clawback provisions that allow, you know, benefits that have been previously, you know, transferred to a business to be essentially added to their upcoming tax bill or, or to be, you know, taken back by municipality. But it doesn't happen terribly frequently. But what a, a decertification would do would mean that the tax incentive would essentially, it would be canceled as of a certain date. You know, obviously, people will pay their taxes on an annual basis, so it'll be, once a project is certified with their next tax, you know, cycle, they'll no longer be able to take advantage of that incentive. And again, this doesn't happen terribly often, but it does happen here and there where a business will promise they're going to a business will promise they're going to create these jobs, and then maybe they don't, or they promise they're going to do a project, and then maybe it doesn't happen, or it doesn't happen the way that they described, or, and the value isn't there for the community. So there is a decertification process. When that would happen, you know, the city could send a letter to the EACC or, you know, to me, essentially, and I could forward it along. And the decertification process would begin. That would involve a hearing, where the business would be allowed to come to the state and kind of present their side. But I will also say that there is certain flexibility in that, you know, a project that, or a business, might be delayed in a portion of what they're trying to do over the years, because when something happens, something comes up. So the state might say, "Hey, you said you were going to create this many jobs. You haven't done so. You know, what's the deal?" And they could say, "Well, you know, we got held up. We're six months behind, or we're 12 months behind, and can we, you know, we're still going to create these jobs, but it's just, it's going to take us a little bit more time." And in those kinds of cases, the state will want to work with them, you know, and be flexible, because, you know, the point is not to, "Oh, you didn't strictly do this. Now we're going to pull everything away from you." You know, we want it to help people succeed, and help communities succeed, and help businesses succeed. And so, you know, there is a certain amount of flexibility, but in those cases, you know, it will be reviewed by the state, and the company will have the opportunity to say their piece, and there certainly have been, you know, decertifications that have happened where there was not agreement, where the business was, you know, felt like it wasn't fair, but it still would happen. But a lot of times as well, the business knows, like, they know what they committed to, they know that they either didn't do it or aren't able to, and so it's, you know, there can be amicable decertifications as well.
Thank you. I may have other questions, but I'm going to, right now, pass.
Counselor Luskowitz?
I didn't have my head up.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yeah, the proposed TIF, is that for just the Blackington Mill part of the project or also include the Tourist part of the project?
So, just, this is just for the Blackington Mill part?
Just for the Blackington Mill. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Sapienta?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I had a basic understanding of TIFs before tonight, but your presentation made it much more understandable as how the, you know, the economic development versus what we charge for taxes, and then as the taxes increase, or as the business increases, the taxes would match potentially lost revenue in giving the TIFs. And I like that part of the TIF, that we, if we don't do it one way, we don't earn the income one way, we earn it through the growth of the eventual growth of the business.
Yeah, that's a key part of the program and why it works so well.
Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair. First, thank you for the presentation. Very, very informative. One thing that's really important that you pointed out that the public should be reminded of is that a TIF does not mean there won't be no taxes at all. They'll still pay taxes on what the old value of that was, so they're still paying something. It's not a total, they're not paying anything at all. There are still taxes being paid, it's just the new assessed value isn't being taxed at the normal rate, essentially. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
One question that Keith kind of put out there, but I don't think that I got answered, was what happens if the property is sold to another company or another business? How does that affect a TIF?
Yeah, so in that case, and I've seen this happen at least one time, where a TIF was amended because of that, where a municipality had done a TIF for a project, and then it was sold to another owner but leased back to the business. And so, they amended the TIF because they felt that the business still should receive a portion of the benefit that they had been receiving when they owned the entire parcel themselves. But, so, in that case, it would kind of be a situational, they would look at it and say, you know, was this sold, is the business still operating there? Is it now transforming to a lease? Did they, are they just leaving the project? You know, in that case, it would just be disqualified most likely, or decertified. But again, that would be a situational basis where it'd be looked at, you know, case by case.
So, it's not automatically transferred to a new owner if a new owner takes over?
To my understanding, it's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Bona?
Yep. This may maybe go to you, it may go to the mayor.
Actually, excuse me. I need to correct myself. The TIF, if it were sold to a new owner, the amount that's being, the TIF may transfer. It may require the amendment in order for the situation to be resolved. I'm not 100% sure on that case, because it's not very common. So, I do want to correct myself and just be, just, and I can find out the answer to that too as well, but I do think that the amendment process, it doesn't necessarily happen automatically when the sale goes through. It certainly wouldn't hinder a sale from going through, but after a sale would go through, you know, if amendment was realistic or reasonable thing, then it would go through a process afterward.
Just for clarification, if possible, if you could get an answer, a definitive answer on that to the mayor, so that she could share it with all of us, particularly before our next meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That would be great. Thank you.
And that topic is part of the agreement that is being drafted as well.
Okay.
Again, it may go to you, it may go to the mayor. How many active TIFs do we have now that, I want to think just one, but, is it just one? Okay. And we haven't had that many. I mean, over, you know, I think, the time I've served here, I can probably count them on all hands, maybe one, but it, there haven't been that. They don't come through that often. Thank you.
Counselor Luskowitz?
So it is, currently it is just one? Stanley Tools still doesn't?
The only.
Yeah.
The only current TIF we have is with Grow Act Works at this moment.
And that expires next year, I believe?
Fiscal year '26. Fiscal year '26.
Thank you. I also kind of want to clarify, basically, it's new growth. The taxes on the new growth are somewhat delayed by whatever percentage is agreed to by the community. So again, I want to reiterate what's been said. This does not impact the current taxes. Your taxes aren't, someone else's taxes aren't going up because they're paying less taxes. It just means the pool gets a little bit bigger, maybe a little more slowly, but the other economic factors have a real impact. And I guess that's one of the ways I explain it, too.
Yeah, that's absolutely right.
Any other questions? Counselor Shade?
Yes, last question. This particular TIF, is this one that's municipality only, or one that's state and municipality?
This is going for both state and local incentives.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much.
So I just want to follow up with one comment that Counselor Bona made, that, you know, sometimes people are critical of TIFs. I used to be one of those people, to be quite honest, and I thought you were going to call me on it when you said that. One thing we have to remember as we move through this process is, this is development that we don't have now, and this is development that is going to sustain us for many, many years to come. And the one thing that I'm very confident in is, we've already seen the work that Tourist has done. And I think this is going to be an excellent project, not only for economic development, but the expansion of our bike path, the expansion of employment opportunities, and just for the community at large. So I thank you, everyone, for your time tonight, and I will be sharing the agreement as soon as it is finalized, but definitely for our next meeting. I'm going to give you all a little homework assignment, and that is, go and take a walk of Tourist, look around, give Eric and Ben a phone call, and I think you're going to learn a lot if you just go and explore. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Excuse me, is this, so, when the next meeting comes, if we have questions for the Tourist representatives, that's when we would ask them, not tonight?
I won't be here to keep them to 20 seconds, so if you have any questions. Eric will be here.
I guess the only question I have, and again, the mayor may have the answer to this, so, it's really more with the bike path. Being that the bike path would be considered, I'm thinking, a public bike path, and that it's going under the property, will there be a special easement or something that will be coming in front of us or the planning board?
Eventually, as we do the development, yes.
Okay. That was it?
Yeah.
Have you worked to make it work very well in a straightforward way?
Yeah, go to the mic.
Oh, I apologize.
We arrived at that alignment. It's the best possible alignment for the bike path.
And also, we'll have, we'll have to do easement agreements for all of the, I mean, it's not just for underneath the Mill, it's for, we'll be doing easement for every part of it that's on our property.
Thank you.
Counselor Harbin?
Yeah, thanks. I think the question that everybody's probably wondering and excited about, because I am excited, I brought my kids up in Adam, so we live right down the street from the bike path, and we used it all the time, so I am really excited about this. What is the timeframe? I mean, I know you, that's the big question, right? I hate to put pressure, but I mean, I'm just saying, are we going to start next year? Yeah. Okay, I will.
Because it could, you know, it's in a process, and I'll let the mayor answer.
Yeah. So we have been in conversations, I think, since before I took office about the bike path, and we've had many iterations of design, and we really feel that the design that we have is the most optimal, but it also has to be buildable and affordable. So now, we've come to terms with what it's going to look like, and we have to put pen to paper and assign dollars to that, and that's what we're working with Mast dot on. And then from there, we have to pursue the funding. But I don't know how many times we've met and we've talked about what route we're going to take. And all the easy bike paths, in my opinion, have been built, and this is very adventurous. And also, we need to work with the property at Tourist to be able to connect from Williamstown into our downtown. So it's been a lengthy process, and there's still a lot more to go. I can't give you a shovel-in-the-ground date, but we're pretty much settled on what it is going to look like. And now the question is, how do we build it and how do we fund it?
Okay. Great.
Work in progress.
I, that's great. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor and to Tourists. Kind of along the same timeline, when would we expect the bike path to be ready, at least that piece of it connecting from Williamstown? And when would we expect the project to be ready to start welcoming new tourists?
So I think the latter question is easier. Construction will start almost immediately, I mean, within the next year.
I think it's appropriate that you ask the divisions together.
Yeah.
Okay? Because I think that the greatest success will be found if we can coordinate those two. And so, we would like very hard your support and help in getting the state's interest in accelerating so that we can coordinate those, because that is the best possible success. I also wanted to say about the bike trail going through the building, it's, we long wanted to use the industrial waterway, because that was an east-west land connection, and the city's been looking for one since 1895, when this was first proposed. And so, following the former industrial waterway to Jen's point, or to the mayor's point, it's much more difficult than a rail-to-trail, but it is so much cooler. I mean, you're following a waterway, and so you are down in an ecological resource, which is why people come here. If you read the stats, that's the majority of why people come here, right, is for ecology, and it's why we all love living here. And it brings you down into the ecology and keeps you on that level and doesn't break the spell. And so, if we're successful in the work we're trying to do, you will come from the spruces and make it here with very few road crossings, very little awareness of the built environment, except for opportunities like this restaurant, which is a great spot on a bike trail, you know? So anyhow, I think the way the bike trail interacts with the Mill has been a lot of work, both practical work and creative work. And I think, I hope we get to build it, and I think it will be a really special thing if we're able to.
And certainly, Mass DOT is evolving in front of our eyes, as the mayor mentioned, and even Pete Sutton, who's the head of pedestrian and bicycle transportation for Mass DOT, said, "We need to change our thinking, because all of the rail-trail easy conversions, basically, in the state have been built." And this new kind of path that's, you know, through not just a straight line on top of an established rail bed, so it's kind of an exciting thing that in many ways, we're being viewed as almost the first, you know, project in this new phase of alternative transportation development in the state.
So, the question I asked didn't really get answered. When would we expect these projects? If everything's approved, what's the target date for them to be completed and opened and ready to go?
If we are successful in...
Microphone, please. The microphones are for the people at home.
I'm learning. I'm looking.
Sorry.
The, um, we're only in control of certain things, right? So we can speak to our intent and say that if we are successful in working through a TIF, if we're successful in reaching the agreements that we need with the city to build the project, if then we're successful in securing private financing, then 2026, that's our goal, so we want to open. We want the bike trail to open then, too. That's a huge ask.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're dragon slayers, so we're going to do it.
Really?
I don't know. But, you know, that's the goal, is 2026. Can we get that bike trail in this community? Because the day it's here, there's $4 million more economic activity, forget Tourists. I mean, there's 38 more jobs, forget Tourists. You know, the bike trail is hugely stimulative, more than the hotel, I think, will be.
You said 2026. January, July, December.
That's really...
2026!
I'm no longer a rookie in the hospitality industry. And I learned the hard way that you don't want to open in July.
No.
So ideally, we open in the off-season, so that our staff can sort of learn the way that things are going, and we can...
So either April or November.
You're talking three years from now, and a lot of...
6:00 PM, 7:00.
Our intent is to be up and rolling for the summer of 2026.
Okay.
And we will work really hard to do that.
That's great.
And we're in control of certain things.
Just curious.
Yeah.
But what's interesting, and I hope you find a bit refreshing, is as we develop these type of projects, we have regular check-ins with developers, whether it be monthly or quarterly, or lately, it feels like it's been daily. So that's one thing my administration is tasked with, is to monitor these types of developments closely. And as we develop, I'm more than welcome, as your calendar permits, to invite Tourists back for updates as we progress.
We might have to move the start of the meeting to 6:00.
I'm for that.
Just one more thing to, to Counselor Shade's question. I encourage all of you to be squeaky bicycle wheels in talking to your representatives and to Mass DOT and anyone that you can, because that, they hold that schedule in many ways, right? And the thing that we are certainly pushing them on is the section that's through the property, right, that's in the sphere of the Mill development, because that, we can't build a hotel and then build the bike path underneath it later. It has to be done in concert with each other, or it's not going to work. And so, we are hoping to use the Mill development as an incentive and as a lever to get it a little more acceleration on the path. Does that answer your question a little bit more?
Yes, thank you.
Any more? Okay. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for coming. And thank you for coming back next week, or two weeks.
Yep.
Let's move on to Council Paper 9,513-1. Is that the next one?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 7, Section 7-11 of the revised ordinances of the City
of North Adams regarding a change of permit price postponed from meeting of July 11, 2023. Counselor Bona, what's your pleasure?
Um, sorry, I'm still focused on what we're discussing.
Do we want to move this one along and not worry about adding it to the other stuff?
The concern that I have is, one of the pieces we're working on is pulling all the pricing out of the ordinances and having it all just go into Schedule of Fees. And again, that's what's been in the mayor's office since March. So all, we have the Schedule of Fees done, but there's two, three dozen ordinances that have fees in them that are being revised. The city clerk right now... The city clerk right now is going through them, making sure that those ordinances are up to date, because as we've been told, we have ordinances that we look up, and they're not the most current. So she's going through those particular ordinances right now, she told me just before the meeting, you know, so far she did find one that is not in there. So I don't know if we want to make an ordinance and put a fee in it, when our goal is to not have any fees actually listed in the ordinances, we want the fees all to be in one place, in the Schedule of Fees, so I'm not sure.
Do you want to postpone this? Would that be your motion?
Oh, hold on, well, actually, we're in discussion, we have, I don't know, I'm gonna make a, I'll make a motion right now, just to get into discussion, to postpone for two meetings.
Second.
Till August, whatever.
September, the first meeting is September.
Oh, okay, two meetings, not two weeks?
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay.
Just so we can get in discussion.
And wait a second, okay.
That's what I gotta say. So through the chair, I don't, mayor, how, how do you feel? Because you know, right now, what I, what we've been trying to do is get all the fees out of the ordinances, so then down the road, so...
I think, well, that's why I'm looking forward to our next Finance Committee meeting. I think the problem that we're having is parts of my administration and also myself, we weren't part of those discussions. I think we should have a table for each division and then work those sections, similar to what we did with Counsel Sapienza in the Public Safety meeting, by everybody taking a section and rewriting it. It is a bit overwhelming for us when we weren't part of the dialogue, and that we're trying to reference things that aren't online, so I think if we take it section by section, we'll move a little bit faster, but I also feel that it's up to the council to take section by section. But we are, Kathy and I are really willing to be part of that dialogue, but I think if we have a section for each division, Public Safety, Public Services, General Government, it may move along faster for us. The table is huge, and to really get it into a readable format, we were just kind of chasing ourselves in a circle.
Again, speaking with the city clerk today, and just briefly before the meeting, it seems like so far, the majority of them are gonna be okay, but it's those ones that have question marks that she's got to do deeper research in, and, and then one that I know she said she couldn't find at all, so those are the ones that we definitely have. But if we find at least, I think I'd like to start with Public Safety...
Yes, agreed.
And then DPW, and get those out of the way, and hopefully, if we look at the ordinances that she has, and if all the Public Safety ones look good, we can probably get that passed pretty quickly, so that's, that's our hopes.
Well, so a couple of issues. One, there's the issue of the transfer station, which we usually vote on every year to change or to amend the fees, and that's already been held up for over a year, as Counsel Harpin has mentioned a few times to us, that, you know, we really need to stay, get on top of that one. Secondly, I thought the idea of doing it all at once was also to save the, I'd save the money of publishing, because then we could do it as a municipal bulletin, but in the meantime, we're losing money because we haven't raised the fees, it's kind of a catch-22, and I think this started in the two years before I was even, those two years I wasn't on the council, so it would be nice to wrap something up by the end of this year.
Well, I, and as discussed, I mean, this has gone through, it has gone through different administrations, and different administrations have also put different priorities on it, so during COVID, it was basically halted, it wasn't a priority, not of the council, but of the administration, and, you know, and it has gone back and forth, and again, I, as I, and I, you know, communicated with the mayor that, you know, this came to us from the administration, this wasn't the council that said, "Oh, we're gonna do this." This was the initial, the initial request came from the administration, "We need to update fees and fines," and then the committees, and again, prior to this administration, we had to wait a while, because we were waiting for the departments to...
Right, no, I understand that.
So it's not, it's not of, of the council, it's like, it's been, it did, but I agree.
And nor is it on this administration either, nor is it on us, because we've been trying.
And it started under, when Mr. Canales was the administrative officer, and then Ms. Ellison.
I mean, quite frankly, I don't care where it started, I just want to work together and get it done.
Right, that's...
And I agree, and I, you, you've been getting my emails, so...
Yeah, yeah, so that's why we're, we're looking forward to our...
Counsel Harpin?
I'm sorry, I am gonna say it again, I know I've said it a few times already, and normally, it does go to the Public Service Committee, which it didn't do, which is fine. However, when I, I look at this, I think we normally do do the transfer fees every year anyways, and so we're paying for that ordinance regularly, I'm sure we have it budgeted in there to do the, the transfer station, because we do review it on a regular basis every year. I'm not sure, I did read it, and I can't find it now, but I think the sticker price you're asking for non-residents to go up to $100, is that correct?
Well, I, I don't remember, because I know last summer, your committee met and approved it, and then we were kind of, we were gonna hold it to put into here, and then I don't think they've met this year, I don't think we've made recommendations this year, have we, mayor?
So, is there a new rec, because I would just, you know, I just would mention, I did see that Adams raised their sticker fee for the transfer station to $100. So my question and my concern is, you know, the residents of Adams could actually come to North Adams and use their transfer station cheaper than they could their own. So I think, I think we should look at it and, and check the fees and possibly have a Public Service Committee meeting, and I think it would be worthy to, to do before we go ahead and finish up the fees.
And honestly, I would say you, Counsel Harpin, if you want to work with Mr. LaScarbo and the mayor and schedule a meeting, you don't, you don't need permission from us, kind of.
Yeah, well, I, I don't want you to move forward with this before we do what we would normally do, and, and kind of analyze the situation at a particular time, which is, you know, right now, and what's happening in, in surrounding communities and within our own community, I think would be, would be something that would be of value.
I think it's a great idea.
We'll do that, okay.
Counsel Shade?
With that, I'll make the motion to amend and send this to Public Services for review.
Well, this is every, is this, isn't this everything?
Or send specifically the administration?
This is just, okay, this is just the, okay. Counsel, okay, there's an amendment on the table, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counsel Harpin. Counsel Bona, do you have?
I mean, I have no problem, again, with Public Safety, I'm sorry, Public Services, you know, wants to work just on the transfer station, but, and, and if, I mean, I don't, obviously, we don't want to send the whole entire package to Public Services, because that's not, but...
No, but these are all the fees for the public services, for all the transfer station fees.
Yeah, that's fine, I have, I have no issues with that, I mean, again...
Well, it won't take long, we should take a quick look at it, maybe a little, because we did look at it last year, I'm sure it wouldn't be much to do it.
Yeah.
So, so this particular council paper is regarding this particular ord, do you just want to rescind yours, your original motion?
Sure, because I mean, I originally did that just so we could get in discussion, so I'll rescind my, I'll rescind my motion.
And then the new motion on the table, Counsel Shade, could you make it again, please?
Yes, I'll move to send the transfer station items to Public Services for review, the return date...
Of the first meeting in September.
First meeting in September?
That would be fine, yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper 11,286, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City, City of North Adams regarding various fees established in the city code postponed to the meeting of July 11, 2023, Counsel Bona. These are all the other fees, so...
Yeah.
Move that to Finance?
Oh, yeah, well, actually, yeah, so we did schedule, we do have a Finance meeting scheduled for the 16th, so we're gonna be discussing this anyway, at that meeting.
Okay, so motion to postpone until first meeting in...
Yeah, I mean, I can report back from that meeting at the, at the next meeting, or if you want to go to, I mean, we're not gonna have them done in the next meeting, so...
September, so the first meeting in September.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counsel Sapienza, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ordinance fees, ordinance fees. Council Paper 12,218, Mayor's Communication Number 10, requesting review of the taxi ordinance by the Public Safety Committee postponed from the meeting of July 11, 2023. Counsel Sapienza, do you have an update and a recommendation, or a recommendation and an update?
Okay, first of all, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the second meeting of August. The update is that we were scheduled to have a Public Safety meeting on July 27th. Due to lack of quorum, I had to cancel the meeting. I am tentatively scheduling a meeting of the Public Safety Committee for August 17th at 5:30 PM. I will be posting that shortly, and we should have something available for the council, come back to the council on the second meeting of August.
Second meeting of August too soon? Did you say you were scheduling a meeting for the...
Next week.
Next week, the 17th would be the meeting.
The next council meeting will be on the 15th, isn't it?
Twenty-second, yep.
Twenty-second, you're right, I'm sorry, my mistake.
We have a week in between there, yep.
Yeah, because that's next week, and we don't meet.
Yeah.
Second motion?
Second by Counsel Shade. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper 12,273, a communication from Counsel Sapienza to consult with Mr. Peter Gentile to check into a possibility to tap into the audio feed that feeds a TV broadcast postponed from the meeting of July 11th. This had been referred to the NBCTC and the administration with an original of return date of 7/11/23, but has been postponed again. Do we have a motion?
Motion post, to postpone that to the, right now, I'm gonna postpone it to the second meeting of September.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper 12,290, Mayor's Communication Number 7, oh, no, I don't have to do that one, I already moved to the next one. Council Paper 12,291, Mayor's Communication Number 75, recommending the appointment of Kevin Hempstead to serve as a member of the Traffic Commission, filling the unexpired term of Jesse Byrne for a term to expire January 12, 2024. Without objection, I'll file a communication and...
Move to approve.
Second?
Counsel Wilkinson, Counsel Shade, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper 12,292, Mayor's Communication Number 76, recommending the appointment of Annette Guirino to serve as a member of the Windsor Lake Recreation Commission, filling the unexpired term of Lawrence Jowett for a term to expire April 1, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was a tie, so Counsel Sapienza and Counsel Harpin, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper 12,293, Mayor's Communication Number 77, recommending the reappointment of Timothy LaScarbo to serve as a member of the Housak Water Quality District for a term to expire April 1, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counsel Wilkinson, Counsel Ramazahan, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper 12,294, Communication from Counsel Wilkinson, requesting a change to policy rules by adding a liaison, council liaison to the North Adams Redevelopment Authority. Counsel Wilkinson, do you have a motion?
I do, I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I, it's up, if I might, might give you an idea of why I'm doing this.
Go ahead.
A perfect example is tonight, when we're talking about the TIF. Everybody's forgotten about Heritage State Park. They're trying to do stuff down there, they're trying to put their own money in, we never hear about it. I don't think that's fair. I've always had a certain interest in Heritage State Park, I've made, let the mayor know that on the day she, that we first met. I believe the city is totally dragging their feet down there, and I'm going to be a little bit more boisterous about it. I'm not, I'm not saying that the, certainly, the president would pick the LA liaison, I'm willing to volunteer, but she can certainly pick whoever she is. So I'd like to see this move forward. I want to be a little bit more vocal on it, sorry, mayor.
Okay, Counsel Bona?
Oh, yeah, I probably won't support this, I'm typically not a fan of the liaisons when we don't actually have a voting member or have the ability to vote. Councillors can go to these meetings anyway, they're public meetings, so you, nothing can stop you from going to a meeting and, and reporting back on anything that's public. So while I do agree with Counsel Wilkinson that it is, can be frustrating, because I think people look at the Heritage Park and they, you know, don't, they don't see how it is separate from the rest of the city budget, or, and not, doesn't fall within, within our guidelines. We have voted, I voted against once when former administration brought in asking us for money to support the lack of funds they had, they wanted to come from our budget, and I didn't support it at the time, because again, as Counsel Wilkinson says, we don't get informed, we don't get asked, we don't become part of it. I'm not sure if the liaison is the right way, but I'm not opposed to it, but I've just never been a fan of liaisons that we just go sit at, and, when you can go sit at it anyway, so, thank you.
Counsel Shade, then Counsel Harpin.
Thank you. Through the chair, Counsel Bona, we do have a liaison for the Housing Authority, which can't vote, but does show up as well. That's really important to the community, this is another thing that's really important to the community with redevelopment. I don't think it harms anything to have a liaison, and you are absolutely correct, any member of the public and any councillor can go to these meetings, they are posted like any other meetings, they are open to the public. Everybody can and should go to as many meetings as they can make and be involved, but I don't see that it does any harm to have a liaison, so I'm in favor of doing so, thank you.
Counsel Harpin? Thanks. I'm gonna agree with Counsel Bona on this one. There's a lot of things that I requested as well, to be on, you know, the Finance Committee, to be, you know, involved with the Public Safety Committee, doing the Public Safety Building Committee, and, you know, different things that I have asked as well, and, you know, I, I am welcome to go to any of those meetings, and, and sometimes I do, sometimes I'm at a Conservation Commission meeting, sometimes I'm at a Planning Board Committee meeting. So, you know, you don't have to be a councillor to show up to these meetings, anybody can show up. I don't think it's a good practice to set a liaison for a particular interest for one councillor. I, I believe that, you know, I know that this is something that's important to the community, I am fully aware, I did not forget about Heritage Park, I grew up up the street. I'm fully aware of Heritage Park and, and try to keep on track of what's going on there, along with others in the community, so I, I, you know, when's the last time there's been a liaison to the Retirement Board that's been to a meeting? So we do have these liaisons, and I'm not, you know, I'm on the Traffic Commission, I get to vote, so I do attend those meetings on a regular basis, but there are liaisons within this council that, you know, sometimes we, we don't always make it, so I, I agree, we, we can go no matter what, it's, it's a public meeting, the meetings are posted, they're on I-Berkshire, TME usually goes to the redevelopment meetings, I, I see her, her write-ups on a regular basis, anybody could go, so I, I just, I just don't think it's a, it's a best practice to just randomly select certain commissions that people have interest in to set up a liaison.
Counsel LaScarbo.
I'll agree with Counsel Bona and Harpin about the liaisonship, and to get to Counsel Shade's point in, in the analogy to the housing, and the Housing Authority is a commission, they're just kind of like an advisory board, the house, or the redevelopment authority is their own governing body over that, over that park and the area surrounding, so I don't believe the redevelopment authority doesn't have a liaison to the... doesn't have a liaison to the city council, we're our own governing, governing body, so I wouldn't be in favor of this either. And to go expand even further, the conversation should be later on down the road of the possibility of putting out an RFP and getting rid of Heritage Park into private ownership and dissolving the redevelopment authority.
Well...
Everybody may not agree, but that could be a conversation later on down the road.
The redevelopment authority isn't just Heritage State Park, it's a particular, it's a neighborhood, but I'm not going to mince words on that because that's not part of the conversation. So there is a motion to add a liaison to the council liaisons list. There used to be a much larger list, we cut it back, we expanded it, it's, it's been, it's evolved drastically in the last 12, 15 years I've been involved. So I would call for a roll call on this. Bona?
No.
Harbin?
No.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
No.
Sapienza?
No.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackma? Oh, Blackma, sorry. Yes.
Yes.
Four and four goes down. And so, it doesn't go through. I'm sorry, Counselor Wilkinson.
It's okay, I can still talk about it.
You can?
And you're always welcome to ask any questions you want me to.
You know I will.
Okay. Okay, moving on to approval of taxi license, an application to approve the license by Austin Rahilly to be granted to drive a tax cab for OTT taxi. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of taxi license for Brandon Asher to drive a tax cab for OTT taxi.
Motion to approve? Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Sapienza and Counselor Oleskowitz.
Yes, on the, on the form, it says I hold Massachusetts. Of course, the driver's license number's been redacted, but has held this license for how long and that information is missing on that application.
It looks like, it looks like they've waited over...
I didn't check out I could work this out.
Oh, but you did? It was approved by, I can't, is that Lieutenant Beverly?
Yes.
Okay, it's of note. I found the next page now. Most all residents for the last five years.
Oh, I did not see it anywhere.
No, okay, that's, it's... Counselor Oleskowitz?
So, we're approving licenses for a business that is located on River Street. Last night I did notice that, it looks like the buil, the business is being vacated, they're emptying the office and the signs have been taken down, so I'm just wondering if the business is still listed currently at River Street or if they are relocating?
Okay, one, this was submitted before you, obviously to be on our agenda. I think that's an issue for the owner and not for the driver.
But it's an issue that we are a governing body over a tax cab and it looks like they might be relocating?
But we don't know when this application came in before. I think it's an issue for the, for the, to deal with the owner of the business. Counselor Bona?
Uh, yeah, fine, we, we do have our opinion and they actually posted they are relocating.
Oh, okay.
So they posted they are relocating. While they may still be in that office, it doesn't look it, they took down their signs. But that being said, I don't believe the city clerk or anyone has received any information to reapply for our new location. So it just feels like at this point, we're approving things for a business that is not properly going to be certified.
Mayor?
Yeah, we haven't been told where the relocation is and I thought, I saw Mr. Lord here earlier, but that was news to us this morning, so we haven't been approached about an exact location.
Counselor Wilkinson?
I believe that the argument was made on these applications that nobody wants to keep somebody from making a living. I know Counselor Oleskowitz was very upfront with that, but at the same token, this council has a history of postponing license applications if the application is not filled out properly.
Okay. Well, the other issue is I have, I mean, these applications came in last week. I don't know when any of these posted, when things were posted, but as far as the business changing their address, I don't want to hold that against the driver because it's not their fault, they applied for a license based on a business. So we can choose to do that. Counselor Harbin?
I would just note, you know, businesses sometimes change their locations and, you know, when they do change their locations, they go through a transition like anybody would, you know, you're moving your home. You have to change your, you know, go to the post office and get your mail, you have to change, there's a lot of things, your driver's license, there's a lot of things that you have to change in this time period from when you're moving from one location to another, whether you're a resident or a business. So if this business is still leasing this property on River Street and it is still their business to walk into, then it's still their address. So whether that's going to be transferred to another location, that, that could very well be. However, it sounds like to me more of they're in transition than they are actually physically moved.
Well, they would also have to go before the Planning Board to get their new business location approved.
Correct.
If it's, if it's in North Adam.
That's true. Counselor Shade?
Yes, so if the business is moving, which they seem to have publicly posted, the application for a license does not include the address of the business, it just says the name of the business. So where they're located, based on the application, isn't as relevant as the other information. Now, as far as their business license, that's a whole nother topic and that's a whole nother discussion, that's a whole nother board that needs to review that if they're moving to a new location. I will say however, that it was a great point app, that the application on the second application is missing information and incomplete. And with it not, not being complete, I, I would be in favor of postponing this.
And another one, if you want to look at the other license, the person's had their license for 54?
I think that's five years.
Five years, okay, because I'm like, wait, he's born in '02 and in 54, the math doesn't work. So it's F, okay, it's illegible, but okay.
I read it as five years on that one.
So, that's when I looked at the date of birth. Counselor Bona?
So what makes this business unique versus, let's say, other retails and offices, is that the business includes vehicles. And, and those vehicles are, in a sense, what gives these applications jobs. Now, what we don't know, we know that the business that is currently there is, they are relocating in the sense that there's nothing at that office at the moment other than just one desk and the signs are down, is one thing the Planning Board, I think, looks at, especially with a taxi license, is where do these cars park? Because if this is running out of a house on a residential street, there are going to be now multiple taxis driving in and out of a driveway or on, on a street. So I have a hard time approving, and again, it's not against the driver, but without knowing where these vehicles are operating out of, you know, it's, it's sort of like, I'm not denying the driver, but I'm denying where these vehicles are because we don't know at this point where these vehicles are going to be located. And that, like I say, all of a sudden someone could be like, hey, why is there all these taxis coming in and out of my street? Because at this point, we don't even know if they're going to be in a commercial location. We, we don't know.
Counselor Shade, then Counselor Sapienza, I'm sorry. Sorry, Counselor Bona, were you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
Okay. Counselor Shade, then Counselor Sapienza.
Thank you. And Counselor Bona, to your point, I agree that we need to know where these taxis are operating out of, but even if this person weren't driving, we still wouldn't have the answer to that question and it's not in our authority. We don't control that license as a business itself, that's the Planning Board, that's a whole nother department. We only control the aspect of is this person employable? Now, from the application that we received, there is missing information, so I think delaying it would be appropriate until we have all of the information. But I, I can't vote no just because that's, the, the business license itself is not what we are overseeing, we are only overseeing the hiring of this individual and saying that they meet all the credentials. But we don't have all that information, I know that this particular person has all the credentials because it's not filled out properly. So again, I'd be in favor of delaying this particular person, but until we know for sure about the business license, which the council has no control over, we have to operate as business as usual.
And actually, we do have control, but it's a separate process. We approve their business and we approve them to do business at a particular location, so that's another issue for us to follow up, follow up on and we may see that issue in the next meeting. So we have this application in front of us, Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, yes, the conversation got skewed away from the actual subject and what I'm basing this on is strictly just the admission of, the omission of the information that's required on this form and nothing else, where the business is located, where the vehicles are parked, or anything like that, that's my only concern, is that this application is not complete.
Okay, so was there a motion to approve it or not? Counselor Obasahan?
Yeah, I just have a, a question, like I'm, what specific information is missing from this application? So I'm...
Page one underneath date of birth, it says I hold a mass driver's license and it's been whited out because we don't give that and have held this license for how long, the how long has not been completed. We don't know if they've had a license for a year or 20 years. That's the question. Counselor Harbin?
Yes. I do agree that that is missing and it is something that I generally look at as well, how long they've held their license. And we have in the past postponed these items when it's not complete. The only other thing that I would offer is, I know the lieutenant is very thorough in, in researching his information and I know he knows that ordinance inside and out because I've seen him at the public safety meetings, discussing him. He's, he's very fluent in the taxi ordinance, I, I can guarantee that. So now that I have that interaction with him and know how much that he knows this ordinance and, and he signed off on it and it is a, it's one item that is missing and everything else is here and tied up, I would be apted to vote for it.
Counselor Oleskowitz?
I would concur with Counselor Harbin, I've been pretty consistent with the same, of not holding back someone from being employed and I'll agree with that Lieutenant Beverly did sign off on it and if there were an issue, we probably wouldn't have. And my prior comment was a point of information, just to please verify that this business is located at this address, they have posted they are moving, they don't have a place they're moving to. It was more informational, not a jump down, Counselor Oleskowitz's back moment here.
Okay, I want to clarify something. We have one of, was it last, the last meeting or the meeting before, we had someone who filled out information, checked the wrong, we don't know if it's the wrong box or not and we postponed that one, didn't we?
No, we passed them that night, the mayor did get on the phone with Lieutenant Beverly and clarified that he was...
Trying to.
Valid to drive.
And I would have offered that tonight, but I know that Lieutenant Beverly is not available by phone.
Okay, that's fine, I just, I couldn't, I was like, wait, why am I not seeing that again? Because...
I have a question through the chair, it's not specific to this application, but it is about the business. If the business is no longer in its current address, okay, and, and based that the business was approved by the Planning Board to be in that location, if the business isn't there, does the city, without the council, or does it still, to come to council, did not, can stop them from operating because they are not in the, they're not in the location where they were approved to be? And also where are all their licenses through the state and everything say they're supposed to be?
At this moment in time, I don't know that answer. We were just informed of this change last night into today. I would anticipate that Mr. Lord would have a conversation with Mr. Maranti about what's going on, I know that Mr. Maranti has reached out to him. So we're just a surprise, but that is the question. So we, we don't, you, most of you have more information than we do right now. But that is a question that will be flushed out.
Counselor Sapienza?
Yeah, one quick question, can we, can we make a motion that this is pending until that information is supplied within the next, say, five days or three days? Can we do something like that as long as the information is supplied?
I would say since Lieutenant Beverly signed off on it, I would say I'm fine with that. The question is, what was the original motion?
To accept.
Okay, so we did make a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
And we had a second?
All right.
Because then we had discussion, lots of it.
Yep.
You want to amend that to say pending completion of the document?
Yeah, I would...
Within five days?
Yeah, so my motion would be to hold off on approving this application until...
We wouldn't hold off, we would approve it pending.
Approve it pending the supply of the, or the inclusion of the missing information.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? Counselor Harbin?
Are we going to put a timeframe in there? Three days, you know, within three days? I mean, we don't, what's this?
Okay, I'll amend this to within the next three days.
Okay.
You just said five. You just said five.
I thought you said five.
I believe you originally said five.
Yeah, let's keep it at five.
Normally I wouldn't, but because, I mean, Lieutenant Beverly signed off on it, I think we're good, I think he is, as Counselor Harbin said, pretty diligent in these. So we have a motion, we have an amendment, so all in favor of the amendment to make it pending, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? One nay?
I'm voting against the whole thing anyways.
Yeah, that type, that's, I'm with him.
Okay. So we have six yays, motion carries. Now, voting on this pending, voting on this as amended, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? Two opposed, okay. Motion carries. We have an approval of a secondhand dealer shot, dealer, an application submitted by Wesley Nelson and Andrea Blair to be granted a secondhand dealer license for Bell Tower Records LLC postponed from the meeting of July 11, 2023.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Harbin, Counselor Sapienza, discussion? Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair, I guess, to Clerk Leonazio. Does this, on the bottom it has signature of Chief of Police, is that supposed to be signed before or after?
He did sign off, this is just a copy of my copy, so we do have the signed off one.
Okay, and is this for the full year, the partial year?
And it's for the full year.
Okay, because the, on the application, it doesn't really mark that off anywhere, so for the future, we might want to update the form so they can, we know.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's updates? Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, I'm going to go back to the beginning. Open forum, not... Open forum, an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Anyone wish to approach the name and address for the record?
My name is Eric Wilson. And where I live? St. Chelt Court, Eagle Street. Good thing I can laugh about myself. And the presentation in there was earlier. I am, I am very for, it's going to help the community, it's going to take time to develop, nothing happens overnight. I want my book. I realize that nothing happens overnight, it takes time, got to go through the process. Out there, the community is going to help us in a lot of ways, it's going to just take time. I know it's been, the mayor is doing a good job, all of you doing a good job up to a point. That's just my opinion. The community, you just got to be patient, it's going to happen, just give hope. I know changes are hard, but, but you've just got to realize that you got to go through changes. If you don't, you're going to die. I don't, I'm not for that. I don't think anybody out in the community or here wants to see North Adams die so far. And that's all the thing I got to say.
Anyone else?
Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinzy Street. A couple of meetings ago, Counselor Sapienza said he observed a couple of people slipping on the bleachers at Joe Wolf Field because of the water with a pop-up rain. And I don't dispute that. But I went down a couple of days later at a full storm and tried to make my feet slip on them, them steps. And I could not do it. And I challenged him not to do it. I went down and I took, this is what the steps look like. And these are raised up about an eighth of an inch. And even with my small foot, I cannot step in between and make it slip. You know, you exaggerate a lot of things, and that was one of them. You know? And trying to put these 3M stickers down, that's not going to stay because it'll come up. And then I understand they don't agree with that anyway. And I would suggest, the next time you go to a ballgame, there are two handicap areas, and use them, okay? And there's one on each side of the bleachers. And I'll tell you one thing.
You're at your two minutes.
If you use the handicaps, I'll, if I'm invited, I'll buy the popcorn.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Go ahead. Name and address for the record.
Robert Smith, I live at 163 North Street. I 1 million percent disagree with Mr. Cardamino's assessment. I did fall there. So I don't know what he's talking about. Speaking about things that people make up, I think he does a good job on making up things.
Point of order. No, we can't, we can let them say what they want.
Yes, we can.
Unfortunately.
And I think, I think you want to go as facts straight. Thank you.
That's why I didn't stop Mr. Cardamino.
Okay.
Yeah, SJC came about with, out with a ruling on March 8th. That's why things have...
Right, yep.
I'm sorry.
No, I totally agree with you.
I get it, I get it. Anyone else wish to approach the council? Hearing done, we will move on to the mayor's updates.
Just a reminder, tomorrow night is our downtown celebration from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. I hope to see everyone out. And that's all I really have for tonight. It's been a long night.
Committee reports and liaisons. Counselor Sapienza?
Yeah, just want to give a quick update on the audio project. I don't remember if I did this last meeting or not, but we did test the audio system or setup similar to what we proposed, and the test was very successful. We ran the amplifier and a couple of speakers with just temporary, a temporary hookup, and the pickup was very good from all the counselor, the mics at the counselor tables. We also tested the mayor's lapel mic and the two wireless mics that are here in the room, and the system worked very well. And it does not interfere with the operation of the hearing assisted devices that Mr. Cardamino uses. So we feel that the next step will probably be to actually test a temporary setup during a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any correspondence.
Counselor Shade still has?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Shade?
Yes, just an update from the idea commission. Typically, we meet on the second Wednesday of the month, but with tomorrow being the downtown celebration, we are moving our meeting to the third Wednesday of the month. So it's been rescheduled for the 16th, just so everybody knows. And I also have a question through the chair to the mayor. Do you have an update on the status of the handicap ramp out in front of City Hall?
Yes, the goal is, I believe it's around August 23rd, that we'll be taking up the cobblestone, and the contractor will be in to pour the cement and do the sloping.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to remind everybody that we have a joint meeting with the planning board at 5 o'clock on Monday. If, because we need a quorum of two different committees, if you could notify the clerk if you can't make it, that'd be really helpful. I know, particularly because it's not our normal night, and people might have commitments. I just want to make sure we have a quorum. And I can't make it because I have a meeting that night at 5 o'clock. So I just want to make sure that we can get as many people, and we can at least get a quorum so that we don't have to move it again. Any other issues? Counselor Sapienza?
Yeah, just a quick update. On Thursday, August 3rd, I was able to attend the informational meeting regarding the reopening of the North Adams Regional Hospital. As a critical access hospital, the plan is to reopen the hospital with 25 inpatient beds at the BMC North Campus here in North Adams. This is very exciting news for residents of North Adams and the surrounding northern Berkshire communities. BHS President and CEO Darlene Rottowitz spoke at the meeting. My takeaway is that this is a serious investment in the community, and BHS has already invested about $7 million in the project. I've already mentioned that this would provide up to 25 inpatient beds with some beds dedicated to skilled nursing, which is rehabilitation. As a critical access hospital, the facility must provide 24/7 emergency care, the beds, the 25 or fewer beds, and the average length of stay approximately four days. This also, and it also must be a part of a system of care that allows transfers to facilities of higher level of care, such as the BMC Main Campus or, say, Bay State. Licensing must be obtained from both the state and federal governments. The application to the state will be filed in early September of 2023. Federal government certification should come later this year. All approvals are expected by early 2024. Some of the benefits of a critical access hospital would include keeping patients closer to home, improves convenience and comfort level of the patients in North County, cuts down on transport times for EMS, and reduces common transportation issues. Some of the conditions that a critical access facility could treat, pneumonia, heart failure, COPD, arrhythmia, respiratory failure, weakness, fainting, hip replacement, and post-surgical care. Berkshire Health Systems asks for community support by spreading the word about the benefits of a CAH in our community. And they ask that you send a letter of support to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to let them know you, you support this project. And there's an email. If anybody has any questions, they may contact berkshirehealthsystems@community@bhs1.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.